Glad you're sitting next to him.
Welcome, Vice Mayor and Council members. I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for December 5th, nope, for December 19th, 2022 to order. And I would like to wish everybody a happy second night of Hanukkah. Could I please have the Vice Mayor read the land acknowledgement?
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land urgently protected by the Confederate villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge that the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth. Sorry, will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Ramira.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey.
Here.
And Mayor Teederman.
Here. We now move to the City Manager's report. City Manager, may the council please have your report.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Council. An update on our pavement work around town. As I'm sure you've all lived it and experienced it, thank you again for your patience as we work through some important rehabilitation and repaving work. We have construction for the pavement rehabilitation project underway, beginning with curb ramp installations. Crews have completed curb ramp installations at several intersections with more to follow, including Jackson and Castro, north side of Canes and Dartmouth, south side of Carmel and Washington, and the southeast ramp of Masonic at Portland. We will also be doing some base digout and pavement patching at various locations around the city, hopefully catching all of those potholes while we can between rains. In addition, I'm sure you've all noticed that Marin paving project remains underway. We have taken the extra strides to retain a construction manager to assist with ongoing monitoring of the project and to help manage access for both pedestrians and bicyclists that must travel in this area. If you have the opportunity, we do still advise that you use alternative streets during the construction. I'm pleased to let everyone know that we have launched our street tree inventory. This is an inventory of all city street trees along public right-of-way, as well as empty tree basins. This includes a 360-degree visual inspection of each tree to collect attributes such as species, size, and health, location information, and hardscape conditions, and also a digitally timestamped photo of each examined tree. As the council may recall, this work is the preliminary data analysis and collection to inform the upcoming tree master plan work that will be conducted citywide as a planning project to help further define our policies pertaining to street tree planting, maintenance, and removal. Also, as you've wandered around town, hopefully you've seen our fall into haiku signs. These are always a welcome addition to our public right-of-way and community areas and are all submitted by community members as administered through our Arts Committee. Here's a map of the locations. Again, thank you to our City Clerk for guiding the visuals as I do the report. The council may recall at your last meeting, the passing of the Green Building Resolution requiring all-electric construction for new buildings and major alterations. This becomes effective January 8th, 2023. And the requirement applies to new construction, including accessory dwelling units, major additions or alterations that exceed 50% of the floor area. And you can learn much more about this, including the details and thresholds, on our website as posted. Solano Avenue Association Winter Strollish was held on December 11th. This ran the one-mile length of Solano and featured businesses in both Albany and Berkeley. And the Picnic Shop held their holiday maker market with the street closure as authorized by the City Council. This was held last Saturday, December 17th. Featured local makers for holiday shopping and live music. Again, thank you to the council and to city staff for support of this event. I'm repeating myself, but the Albany E-Gift Card Program sold out again. It's a phenomenal benefit to the community and for gift-giving and also to support our local economy and Solano Avenue and all of our businesses, San Pablo as well, and anyone participating in the program. To date, we've generated over $140,000 that will be spent in the local economy. And lastly, our City Clerk has updated our elections page on the city website to include the detailed election results as received from the Register of Voters Office. So this is supplemental information that we didn't have immediately following the election that can help inform some further analysis. And finally, I would just like to conclude with the fact that we've now finished all of the administration for the election and would like to recognize our City Clerk for mastering that very challenging election and transition. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll turn to the public. If anyone attending would like to ask a question or comment about the City Manager's report, please raise your hand or press the raise hand button. You will have one minute. If you are on the phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Note, this is for question comments on the City Manager's report only. If you have comments on matters not on the agenda, the time for those is next. In this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each person that has spoken. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not be intimidated by others' comments or reactions. Seeing none, we move to Good of the City. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now. By phone again is star nine. By state law, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances, where either items raised may be referred to future agenda or to staff for comment.
Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Anne, City Manager, City Attorney. So, I mean, there's a lot of public comments I can make. I just want to point out one thing about ventilation. I mean, still, we have hybrid meetings because of COVID. So obviously, COVID is kind of a big deal. It's killed a lot of people. And I'm just concerned the ventilation in this room. I mean, the fans aren't on. There's two different maximum occupancies of this room. One says 81 and one says 49. You know, I think this building was engineered many years ago, and the ventilation system was engineered for probably 49 people. I don't know how many times we fill this room up to 49 people unless we're having a cert graduation ceremony. But, you know, I don't see anything monitoring the CO2 levels in here. I don't know. I mean, it sounds like the air is on, but I don't see the fans running. So I just want to raise some awareness about the engineering standards for CO2 levels. It doesn't really get a lot of light here in any of these meetings, but it's a very important thing, having proper ventilation. I'm just wondering if the city staff has hired, not an investigator, but a forensic person to do a study on the HVAC system? Just wondering about that. See, we've got a minute left. It would be nice in the future to see the City of Albany lead by example regarding the infrastructure regarding electric vehicles. Maybe put a solar parking structure in the parking lot here. That'd be one thing to do. Also, I mean, there's a lot of cars that are parked on the streets and run extension cords across the sidewalk to plug into their house, to plug in their electric car on the street, and it poses a tripping hazard. I know there's one on the end of my block on Cornell toward Marin where every single night, there's an extension cord draped over the sidewalk, parked from the street. It just prevents a big-time tripping hazard. So is there any way to do infrastructure to where we can have solar charging, I'm not solar, but electric charging stations for parking on the street? Maybe run a line through the sidewalk, some sort of electricity through the sidewalk? You could probably grind it out or something, but that could be a good idea. Thanks.
Your turn.
Yes. Dear Albany City Council members, my name is Christina Tweed Conrad, and I grew up here. And I stay here because of the conscious, compassionate, inclusive nature of our community. I care deeply about this community. I have spoken with the previous board in the past about this issue, but unfortunately, the problem still exists. So I would like to address it again and hopefully come up with some solutions together. In the past four weeks, four horses have died at Golden Gate Fields Racetrack, two of whom were just two years old, meaning their bones are still soft and breakable. One of these two-year-olds was still unnamed, and she died from a heart attack during hard training on the Albany side on the track. She had not yet been raced or bedded upon. And these are only the most recent examples of what happens regularly in our town. I know that the CHRB, California Horse Racing Board, is the state agency that is supposed to be overseeing the tracks and protecting our horses. Their board is comprised of two former jockeys, a racehorse owner, a former stablehand, and three business executives. So it is not exactly without bias. After four years of attending their meetings, I've seen that very little mention is given to the horses because the focus is on monetary gains and racing schedules. I would like the City of Albany to form an investigative committee, which would work closely with the CHRB and possibly the Berkeley City Council to investigate each injury and death at Golden Gate Fields Racetrack. Perhaps the City Council could urge compliance with state and local laws to which all other individuals and businesses within our city limits must be compliant, first and foremost of which is California Penal Code 597, which forbids the overwork of animals. Another idea could be to suspend Albany business license each time a horse is injured or dies in the City of Albany in order to conduct a thorough investigation. Thank you very much for your attention to this very important matter and these oftentimes forgotten about constituents within our city limits.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nilu Farsham Bayyadi. I'm a resident of Berkeley, but lived in Albany for one year. I'm here this evening to express my grief and outrage at the continual and mostly preventable, I emphasize preventable, deaths of horses at Golden Gate Fields. So far this year, 15 horses have died. As Ms. Conrad mentioned, four of them within the last four weeks. But GGF's owner seemed to be immune from the scrutiny of their practices and have no financial incentive or moral compass to make even minor changes to their practices to reduce the abuse of the horses in their possessions. It's a disgrace to allow abuses and these tragedies continuing in Albany and Berkeley. I plead with the two city councils to step in and protect these innocent horses who are not able to spend even a single day roaming in natural fields rather than racing in Golden Gate Fields for the profits of owners of the GGR. Horse racing is a relic of the past and must end because its business model is to maximize profit and keep the gambling exciting at the expense of the mental and physical health of the horses. Until the industry is gone, which I'm sure it will one day, sooner better than later, there are a few changes that you, as our representatives, need to demand, such as whipping and doping be banned. I mean, I don't know whether you're aware of it or not. They are doped all the time, just to not let them suffer too much from the pain and also increase their energy level and a lot of other medications that I'm not very familiar with. So whipping and doping must be banned. Training and racing of horses before their bones are fully developed be banned. GGF be banned from killing the injured horses unless absolutely necessary and be held responsible for their treatment and release to animal sanctuaries. GGF be banned from abandoning or selling the horses who are too old or sick to race to be slaughtered for human consumption abroad. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Margie Marks. I just wanted to add to what the two women said. I've looked this issue up. I realize that the City Council doesn't have authority over what goes on at the racetrack. But the first speaker was absolutely correct. The group that does, it's like the fox is guarding the hen house. I mean, they are literally the racehorse owners that are in this board that takes care of it. I mean, I would like the City Council to at least write a letter to the state and say, this is not appropriate that the foxes are guarding the hen house. Even though you have no control, it's happening in our city, and I think that would be one small step that you could take to try to change this situation. I mean, the first time I heard about it, I was outraged that that is the group that is in charge of the racetrack. So please just write a letter and ask the state to look at the who makes up those people on that board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Greetings, council members, and congratulations, incoming council members. I'm Brian Beal. I'm the outgoing chair of the Albany Pros Commission, and just wanted to, it's coming to the end of our term, and I just wanted to highlight one piece of work that two members of the commission, Price and Amendries, did on the community outreach and community groups and how we can get them more involved. You know, something about this topic, two things I wanted to point out. One is it really strikes to the core of all the advisory bodies. The public is frustrated because, you know, the Brown Act limits their interaction with these bodies to these meetings, which they can't always attend. And so, interaction with these groups is, so what these, this started with an idea. We came to the council, and you wisely approved despite one objection, approved our work plan amendment. And the other great thing about this work was they did a written subcommittee report that was included in the agenda. And I found this really added to the ability of the public to participate, which is one of our big goals, I think, here in the city. So there it is. You know, I think this is something you should have all the committees and commissions look at. I think, you know, the answer is something like what the school board does, where they have one member that's assigned to each school. I think, you know, advisory boards could have one member that goes out and talks to these community groups and gets their feedback and came back to the whole board. So that's about it on that. I did want to say, you know, this is, I'm the outgoing chair. I am planning to move on, and we'll be shopping for another commission. Particularly, I'm looking at the new police oversight commission because of my experience in this area. So thanks again, and have happy holidays, everyone. Thank you. I'm Brian Beal.
Thank you for your comment.
Go ahead, Julie.
I thank you. I just wanted to say, welcome to the new council members. I'm glad you're here. I look forward to attending meetings where you are, the council members. I also wanted to, I wasn't planning on saying anything about the racehorse deaths, but I would encourage you to follow Margie Marks' suggestion, because every time this comes up at a meeting, it is really heartbreaking, and then I forget. And I really appreciate that there, every, I think all of us have something that's really dear to us. And obviously, there's a group of really committed people who are concerned about the racehorses and the whole racing industry, and I'm really glad that they continue to do that. My final comment is that at the last meeting, there was an item on the agenda about the Brown Act, and the three of us wrote a letter saying that the Brown Act had been violated. We presented and wrote letters and were supported by other people. And then when we were done, there wasn't even a discussion. In fact, the mayor at that time, Mayor Jordan, forgot that even had to, it remained on the consent calendar and forgot they had to even ask for comment from the council. So it was, I felt really disrespected. I felt like whether you agreed with me or not, that it would have been the correct and respectful thing to have acknowledged that you had gotten comments on this item and that, and maybe even considered making comments yourselves or in some way acknowledging that a lot of thought and a lot of heart went into it and that we were sincere. And the way we were dismissed and basically ignored was really painful. And I attend a lot of meetings, but after that meeting, I really questioned whether it was worth coming because I don't like, I like to feel like what I'm saying is being heard. And I also remember when I was speaking, that looking at everybody's face, that I wasn't, nobody was really listening. They already knew that they were going to vote. And I'm bringing this up with the new council because I would like to really encourage you that if people come to the council with some concern of theirs, and whether you agree with it or not, to not only acknowledge it, but be respectful enough to even have a conversation or at least try to get comments so that people feel like they're being heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Go ahead, Randolph.
Hello, my name is Randolph, and I'm here because I'd like to make sure that the SAGC stays, that it does not get disbanded. This, you know, is very surprising. Just as they were developing the city's Equity Impact Plan, this happens. And of course, is, I would say, touche, because every time that we put a foot forward, we go three, five steps.
Randolph, we are going to discuss the SAGC as its own item. Would you like to speak during that portion of the meeting? We are now in public comment.
Yes, this is my public comment. So you've just taken about 10 seconds.
I'm just trying to clarify that we're in Good of the City, which is for items not on the agenda.
I understand, but this is going to go into the city council. Look, this is my public comment. Whether it is in the agenda or not, it is my public comment. Okay? Do we agree to that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so hopefully I don't get darked all those time that we just spent talking back and forth about it. Look, this is real, okay? I know it's a public comment. Maybe it is, I'm talking about it now because I can't stay long. Have you thought about that? It is Hanukkah, and we celebrate Hanukkah, and I'm making time to address this so I can go and then celebrate Hanukkah. Does that answer your question? Should I, you know, tell you more of my personal schedule? Okay, so now that we have done that, there are disparities predictable by race in the neighborhood of residents and other social categories. Still exist outcomes related to employment, housing, health, and more. The disparities and outcomes are in part the result of longstanding inequitable policies. Here in our district, one-third of our students still fall under that marginalized category. As you know, Latinos and Black students perform lower than their white peers. Unfortunately, our district data demonstrates a similar achievement gap here in Albany. So this is real. This is not about, you know, hey, you know, let's do an equity impact plan. Oh, no, let's not do it. Oh, let's have them, you know, disbanded and then go to the city council. We need a committee that understands this, that looks into this, that goes above and beyond to make sure that the education not only, not only assures the adults in Albany, but it goes down all the way to those who matter the most, which is the children. Because if they can have a chance in equity, and they have a chance because someone put an equity impact plan together and that there is such a committee for it, then you are guaranteeing that your promises when you got elected will be delivered. This is not about, does it fit in the city's schedule? Does it fit, where can we throw it in? This is not about that. Ladies and gentlemen, we are talking about real problems that I have faced as a kid when I was growing up as a Latino man, a Latino boy. So I am here in Albany. I've lived in Albany for 16 years, and I got to tell you, I have so much to tell you from a Latino perspective that you have no idea. We still, I still can't walk in Albany on the streets alone at night because people walk into the other side of the street, even though I am the most cheerful guy ever. It still happens. I'm a veteran, I'm a Latino veteran, but here in Albany, somehow people are forgetting about veterans, and they just don't care. So yes, that's another thing that I have to face.
Thank you for your comment. If you would like to speak more, we will have more time to discuss this when the agenda item comes up. item comes up.
That's it.
Let's move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. And there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to discuss an item separately or pull it from consent?
Seven dash five, please.
Seven five, any other council members? Seeing none, I will ask if any members of the public have any items they would like to speak on separately from the consent.
Perhaps we could make an issue of the agenda item?
I'm afraid that that is not allowed by the constraints we're under, under state law, but thank you. Nobody online? Then we will go to Councilmember Jordan, seven five.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an email exchange with one of the city staff regarding the funding of this item, and I don't know if she is in attendance. She is, the city clerk is saying, so I thought it'd be useful if she could convey to the council and to the members of the community that are here, how this would be funded.
Good evening, City Council. This is Lizzie Carrad, the city's sustainability coordinator, and I brought, I'm bringing, on behalf of community development, this contract this evening, which would help us comply with state law SB 1383. This contract will cover a three-year period, starting in this fiscal year. We have $130,000 of Measure D funds, which are funds we receive from the county. Without getting too into the weeds, it comes from a tax on every ton sent to landfills in Alameda County, and then that tax is split up by population of each member jurisdiction in the county. So, in Albany, we receive quarterly dispersments of these funds, and we're proposing using $130,000 of these Measure D funds for the three-year period. And we also have around $50,000 of already appropriated professional services budget for community development that we would propose to use in fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And because those two funding sources alone don't cover the full amount of the contract for the full duration, the three-year period, and because the contract will continue into the next city budget cycle, we'll plan to come back to the city council to request additional funds to cover the remainder of the contract during the city's next biannual budget cycle.
Thank you, Sustainability Coordinator. I'm wondering if you could take the opportunity, and I'm putting you on the spot, so feel free to decline if you'd like, but I imagine SB 1383 is either unknown or hardly known to the three new council members, and since it has financial implications for the city beyond the contract that's in front of us, I thought it might be helpful if you could provide, I don't know, maybe a one-paragraph brief on the different components and mandatory requirements of that bill?
Can try. It's very complicated, as Councilmember Jordan mentioned, but basically, it's a state law that pretty radically changes how we approach recycling organics in the state of California. Luckily, in Albany, we are ahead of the curve in that we started collecting organics. I'm actually not sure the exact date, but the current franchise agreement we have with our waste hauler took effect in 2011, and collecting organics was included in that agreement. So, that paints a picture. We've already been collecting organics for about a decade. But it imposes additional requirements on the city, which includes decreasing contamination in our three different streams of waste, the trash stream, the recycling stream, and the organic stream. So, making sure that our commercial and residential sectors are putting the right waste in each cart or bin. It also requires us to ensure that we're reducing contamination to do what are called route reviews, which can be done a number of different ways. This contract we would do with our three, if they were to do the route reviews, they would flip lids and take a look and see if the right materials are in the right bins. We're supposed to do a significant amount of outreach and engagement to our community. We are also supposed to procure both recycled content paper and janitorial products, as well as post-consumer, I'm blanking on the correct term that's in the regulations for this, but basically, processed organic material, which is compost and mulch. And that is in order to stimulate the markets for these materials, given that we are putting so many more organic materials into our waste streams. And there are likely, there are also significant reporting and record-keeping requirements for all the activities we do. We're supposed to track them to kind of prove to the state that we're taking these measures. And ultimately, the goal is to reduce the amount of organic material being sent to the landfill, where it turns into methane, which is known to be a very potent greenhouse gas driving climate change. I'll stop there. That was way more than a paragraph, I apologize, but I think that speaks to how complicated these regulations are. But happy to answer additional questions.
That was great. Thank you very much. And maybe there's a little more history that might be useful. It was, I know it was in the staff report, but the city tried to negotiate with the waste management of Alameda County, which, while there's many pieces to SB 1383, I think the piece that would be funded by this contract, it was hoped that waste management of Alameda County would do that under the new franchise agreement. But if I recall, they wanted a 40% or so increase, pretty, pretty extreme increase in their hauling costs, or their franchise costs, which is way beyond what we're looking at with this contract. The advantage of that would have been that the city wouldn't have been paying for it. So, in this case, the city's paying for it. I think it's a good idea, because it's saving everybody a ton of money, as opposed to going with the waste management. I will raise the other part of procurement, which is procuring these organic materials, and the city is going to have to pay for that as well. I consider that an unfunded mandate from the state, even though legislation says it is, it is not an unfunded mandate, and so we can talk about that more when Stop Waste comes up later in the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments on this item?
I have just a quick question. So, does this also include adding additional organic Big Bellies along the business districts? Because we're missing quite a few.
Yes, I can relay that it is required now that every business and multifamily residential building have organics collection, which was not required previously, so it's not directly...
But I meant like the Big Bellies that are on the street.
Right, I know. Yeah, so the public demand has wanted to, to take the opportunity to offer that, while some businesses in the past might not have had organics collection, because they weren't required to, they are under SB 1383, and Stop Waste has taken on the charge for all 15 jurisdictions in the county to basically make sure that happens, so that each city doesn't have to. As far as Big Bellies, there's no nexus, to my knowledge, between SB 1383 and Big Bellies, so I looked staff for that part of it.
Can answer, we are not required to put organics collection receptacles in the public right-of-way, though we've previously made the decision to do so in order to encourage behavior change. So, exposing folks to organics collection receptacles in the public right-of-way will hopefully encourage them to go home and place their organic materials in the public, not in the public right-of-way, in their own organics collection receptacles.
Thank you.
I read this, and by the way, I realize that, do you prefer a council member or a councilwoman?
Councilmember is fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just would second Councilmember Hanson Romero's comment. Now I go to Royal Ground, and there's no organic or green waste Big Belly there. There is one catty corner across the street, so always march across the street, but I imagine that's inconvenient for a lot of people. So, yeah, I think revisiting where those are at would be, would be helpful relative to the businesses.
Just a point of clarification there. As these facilities retain services inside, they also have the opportunity for staff support with regard to internal containers for customers, or people that may be outside coming back in for disposal properly. Doesn't resolve the Big Belly container item, but it may help mitigate to some degree.
Great, thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to pass consent.
I will move the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mickey.
Aye.
Mayor Tiedemann.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Great, that brings us to new business. Our first is 11-1, a proposal to direct staff to transition the Social and Economic Justice Commission to the Racial Equity Commission, and I believe our presentation is being done by Councilmember Jordan.
Yeah, so I think, hopefully, the history was relayed adequately in the, in the report that the mayor and I drafted, but the general idea is that the city has a racial equity impact plan that was developed over a year ago, and came to the council and was, was accepted by the council. And so, without a body that's focused on implementing that plan, it's at risk of not getting the attention it deserves. And historically, the Social and Economic Justice Commission has had a very broad charge, which again, was relayed in the, in the report, which has, I would say, been both an advantage and a disadvantage in terms of focus. I know at times, it's been, when I've engaged with it, it's been relatively unfocused. Now, that was a decade ago, but the thought was that to focus it on racial equity at this time, and that's not to say that that would be the only item it would ever focus on. For my part, I'm, I'm interested in evolving our advisory bodies to progress through the issues that we have, so that they meet the moment of time. I think there's a tendency for the bodies to be more static than they need to be, to meet what the needs of the council are and what the city are. So, at least my thought was that the Social and Economic Justice Commission would, would transition to a racial equity committee, and we would revisit that as a council two years from now, as has been the standard over the last decade, and it might expand or change the charge of that body at that time, depending on the progress that has been made.
And to add to that, in Councilmember Jordan and I's discussions on this, we did consider the earlier idea that had been under discussion of charging the SEJC with working on the housing element, and determined that it would be probably better to revisit that and decide whether we think the SEJC could do that, or whether we need a new body to do it after we have passed our housing element, which will hopefully be soon, but after we do that, we'll have a more definite timeline and list of our needs. I'd also just say that, to be clear, what we've recommended here is to transition this to focus on racial equity, which, as the speaker earlier mentioned, we would be doing essentially what they would want. This is not a move to sunset or sideline this committee, this is a move to focus it, which is based on feedback we received from members of the committee, as well as a discussion that's been happening at the council for some time. With that, we will move to questions from the council before we go to public comment, and then come back for council deliberation. Are there any questions at this time from council? Seeing none?
I just, actually, just wanted, because I know this was discussed a lot in the last meeting, and there was some recommendations from prior councilmember McQuaid. Would this include kind of more, I think she was hoping for more of a little bit of a broader approach, as far as making sure that we also included people who are differently abled, elderly, and not just the racial component along with this change?
So, I think that's something we can deliberate, when we get to deliberation. Yeah, so thanks for raising it.
I'll say that I think our thought process, as Councilmember Jordan said earlier, is for this to be iterative, that this is the farthest down of focus that we would want this to get, and that things could be added to it later, but the idea was to start it with something that's pared down to just focusing on racial equity now, and then if we want to expand it later, as we go on, or notice that they don't have enough substantial to work on, or would like to be on these issues, then we would add it in. But of course, that's up to us to decide. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
So, I prepared a statement in the lobby. So, basically, I looked up capitalists, and capitalist people don't really like social justice at all. So, I'm just wondering, do you guys not like social justice? Or I just don't know what's going on. Systemic racism is a painful, widespread problem in society, even here in Albany. Though we are a welcoming community that embraces its diversity, there are still disparities that exist: income, health, education, housing, senior, youth, ADA, gender equality, and animal rights. And there's other factors that prevent our ability for future prosperity gaps. I understand that equity policy is a great framework, and every decision that this council should make is underneath the equity lens. Social justice, social justice has a broad, various structural mechanisms in place to not only examine those gaps, but understand different viewpoints. Who is going to look at economic justice since the sunset of the economic committee? The SEJC has brought many productive citizens of the community, Citizens of the Year, city councilmembers. It's a very viable commission for our city to maintain. Some principles of social justice are access to resources is fundamental, diversity, and also gives the people the voice, reciprocity, and also equity. So, social justice and equity go hand in hand. I just think that we could just keep it as social justice. If you make the change to specifically racial equity and reduce it to just a committee, it doesn't give anything else a voice. And with the racial equity committee, what kind of subcommittees do you foresee? How many subcommittees can there possibly be? The SEJC has many subcommittees, youth and housing, and I'm just wondering the indecisiveness that's going on with this, because last meeting, you wanted to give the SEJC the focus on housing. Now, you want to focus it on something else and rename it completely. So, just kind of wondering what your priorities are, and if you could just, kind of just keep it social justice, that way we can have a housing subcommittee and racial equity subcommittee, and work on other major issues in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Hello. Yes, it turns out I'm also Brian Beal, former member of the Social and Economic Justice Commission, and let's do the time warp again. I want to take you back to 2016, when I was appointed, and there had been a, what sounds eerily similar attempt to kill the SEJC, which my understanding was promoted by more conservative members of the council. I was appointed when, then-time Councilmember Nick Pelch literally twisted the, the other councilmember's arm, who was, had been delaying appointing someone. I think, you know, one big disservice as a city council member can do is just... I think, you know, one big disservice as a city councilmember can do is just refuse to appoint someone to a commission. So anyway, during that time, we accomplished a really broad array of things. We helped create the city's soda tax or sugary beverage tax, which is now paid for our crossing guards. It's paid for water fountains all over the city. This is accomplished at the SEJC, we have to thank. What if, what if the conservatives had succeeded in killing the commission? So, but I agree with a lot of, I don't, I don't see this as that, but I agree with the previous speaker that there's more involved, and I was the one that proposed an inclusivity subcommittee for the SEJC, was one of the first members, and I just want to point out again that racism isn't the only source of inclusivity. We were facing attacks on people for religion and other considerations as well. And so I think in terms of the, you know, I agree that focus is important. I think, you know, there's a power in a subcommittee, there's power in giving the commission more members, you know, it doesn't have to be such a small number, but I think the housing issue, I think maybe you could take this out of the hands of the SEJC, and what I would suggest is you give a little bit more of a role to the Planning and Zoning Commission and let them work to try to find ways to to get more housing in Albany. And the bottom line is that talking about housing isn't going to do us any good. We got to build housing. That's what it's going to take, and Planning and Zoning Commission's the one to do that, not, not the SEJC. So, but there you have it. So I think, you know, you need to keep the name SEJC. You know, I agree that inclusivity is a good focus, but don't limit it to racism because that's going to exclude us white people, okay? Like, there's a lot of us, so thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment.
This is Margie Marks. I served on the SEJC for 14 years. Its mission is near and dear to my heart. Some of the things the SEJC is responsible for, no smoking on Solano, a living wage ordinance with the COLA written in, rent review, the soda tax, something that I consider a crown jewel in Albany, and that is Albany Cares. For those of you who don't know, Albany Cares started out as a two-day-a-week drop-in center at a church with a very part-time social worker. The SEJC literally spent years to make that happen, and I want to commend SEJC Commissioner Grossman, who really led those efforts. One program of Albany Cares right now is a once-a-month grocery driveway. The capacity of that program is 125 families. I don't know if you know this, city council, but that program is at capacity. The program at the high school where the Berkeley Food Network gives out food is running out of food. We sent some clients there last Friday, and they had run out of food. So I think there's a need for a lot of things in Albany. We do need racial equity, but we cannot forget the social justice part. The council chose to sunset the CMAC committee. What I heard from the council was that the Film Fest is now independent, so we don't need CMAC anymore. Some of the stuff that CMAC did on their work plan is important to the city. I mean, one example is provide recommendations and concrete steps for how the city can better communicate and share information with and about Albany Unified School District, actively promote partnerships between the city and ASUD. I mean, I would just like to look at the city weekly email and know if schools in session or not. I drove today past the high school, I thought, oh, I guess they're on vacation, but I'd like to see that weekly in the weekly email from the city. It seems like there's a school board, and there's a city council, and neither shall the twain meet. So to me, this, this is really important. Plus, this will be racial equity. If any of you have been to the schools, seen the lineup for the food at the village, that's our people of color, so if we can bring the school district and have better communication between the city and the school district, that will help all these families in Albany and help us too. I care about what happens in the schools. The other part that the CMAC was working on was communication. We're dealing with some seniors now in the laundry program, they don't have email. I'd love to see the SEJC, or it could be rebranded another name, I'd like to see them go for a plan to try to get grants to get tablets for seniors. We have seniors in our laundry program who have no email and don't have any idea how to access it. It could make a big difference to people in this city. There's a lot of things the SEJC could do, and I ask you to please keep it, and please do not delay appointing people to the SEJC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Florios, and I sit as the vice chair for the SEJC, and I'm here to ask you to please not rename us to racial equity. It is divisive, and while many things could come from racial equity commissions, they may be viewed as promoting reverse discrimination to the dominant populace here at Albany. The racial equity may be seen, again, as divisive and offensive because it is reductive. I do not want to be seen as my skin color or my perceived race. I would like to be seen as a person, and my children to be seen as a person, and to think that, while well-intentioned, it misses the mark of exactly what racial equity is, which is that it seeks to find the intersections of our humanity and what it feels, fails to address for our community as a whole. And so we need to look more deeply at different groups in the places that we live, and we collect our data at the SEJC to find the real intersections of the identities that data reveals to us through firsthand testimonies and community input. This process is a process that the SEJC already upholds, and it will demonstrate that in the disparities, even our white populace does not have exactly what they need to be successful here in Albany. Whiteness is also not a monolithic race, and this is an important point, that we can't let disparities decide the best outcomes to all of us. For the groups struggling, it can seriously limit what we aspire to accomplish, and you come to find that it's not that there isn't anything intrinsically or categorically different about individuals that we all share in the struggles of our humanity after COVID and in economic downturns, and it what is, we need to focus on is the legacy and the experiences of how people are being treated here are specifically tied to race. So please do not rename us as the racial equity committee. We are here to do social justice work for all and not a few. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I also am speaking out against assigning SEJC just to simply addressing race. The speakers before me have done a really great job of explaining why that's, why it's not appropriate. My suggestion is, if race is so important to the two white men, white cis straight men on this, on this city council who've brought this up, then that you could ask SEJC to make sure that they have a committee that addresses that. But as other people have pointed out, this, we're talking about social justice, and I have a quote for you from Kimberly Prenshaw, who was the person who coined the term intersectionality, a recent quote from her from 2017, where she said, "Intersectionality is the lens through which you can see where power comes and collides, or it interlocks and intersects." It's not simply that there's a race problem here, a gender problem here, and a class and a class or LGBTQ problem here. Many times, that framework erases what happens to people who are subject to all of these things. Intersectionality, as I think Flor mentioned, is such, is such a powerful concept, and what you're doing basically is you're pulling out, just as she so beautifully described, you're pulling out some aspect of a person and saying, we're going to just focus on this one aspect, when nobody, nobody is is like that. There is no one person who is just affected by one thing. Whether you want to give it another name is fine with me if you have a more modern name, but I think it should continue to have a focus on social justice. Albany needs a place where people can go and express their concerns about social justice events and aspects of their lives and what's happening in Albany, and I also don't think it should be, become a committee, but should remain a commission. As Margie Marks pointed out, they've done, SEJC has done amazing work, and they will continue to do that amazing work if you don't get in their way. I've been attending social justice, SEJC meetings for a long time, and I've always been so proud to have a city that has something that's called the Social and Economic Justice Commission. There are a lot of things, but Albany, that I, I would make better, but that's one thing that I have always been proud of, so please, please do not do this and listen to your, your community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That's all.
So we'll bring it back to council discussion. Are there any councilmembers wishing to speak?
I'll go first. You know, being as someone who just finished out a term on the SEJC and is quite familiar with the work that had been going on quite recently, I am not in agreement with that body being reshaped or rebranded into a racial equity committee for a variety of reasons. I think one of our public commentators made that, articulated that very well, who was the current vice chair of the SEJC. But also, I just want to point out that members of the SEJC in January, whereas other bodies probably aren't, are probably leaning towards taking a break. The SEJC is not taking a break. They believe in their work, and they believe in their work because the community believes in them. One of my bigger concerns, if it does get reduced to, or we have this recommendation to potentially see, see it be reduced to racial equity committee, is that we lose sight on some of the things we can accomplish because it becomes very narrowly focused, and this isn't to throw shade at anyone who's in favor of racial equity committee idea. I see it's well-intentioned. However, there are issues that impact people in this community that expand beyond race, that dive into issues of socioeconomic status, that dive into issues of different modes of access, different abilities. This is coming from someone who has a family member who is temporarily disabled, and what does it mean to potentially not have a body or an entity that can advocate for that person now? I'm on this line of thought that it would probably be better to maybe focus on rebranding the SEJC with a more modern name, like someone had mentioned. I like the idea of maybe calling it racial inclusivity and social equity, RISE, Albany RISE Commission. That could probably be a much later conversation, but it still encompasses all the things that SEJC can potentially work on. And again, this is an opportunity for us to invest that confidence back into the people that are appointed to SEJC right now, and just a reminder to us that we, as a council, do have an opportunity and do have the power to change the work plan as necessary. I think many of us on the council would agree that we do need to have some form of focus on racial equity, and that we can make that happen as part of the, a new updated work plan. I believe that all the comments that I have on that right now.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I want to second some of what Councilmember Lopez said, and I think I really want to reach out to the members of the public who've spoken tonight, because I think going into this and having heard previous conversations on this, I think I was on board with the switch. But I think what I'm hearing tonight is, I appreciate, we all have to take a step and remember what have we, we as a group, what has SEJC done in the past, and remember that while maybe at times, there have been times when they haven't been as focused, when one looks back at the things that they have accomplished over the years, it's quite incredible. And so for me, I think I'm a little, I think a name, you could always change the name, but being able to do a work plan where we say, one of the things we really want you to focus on for the next year, the next two years, is the racial impact plan, because this is an important step of us as a community moving forward and really being inclusive and being equitable. That doesn't mean that we necessarily need to change the name of the commission. It doesn't mean that they can't be doing other great works that they're doing. And I think, you know, one of the things, I had the opportunity, fortunate opportunity to work on a lot of Caltrans' social and economic justice grants that worked throughout the Central Valley, and it was incredible to see the variety of people that we were able to help, whether different racial backgrounds, different mobility issues, their age. Our youth cannot get in a car and drive everywhere, so knowing and understanding that our youth needs help, knowing that members of our community who are older perhaps aren't as able to drive as much as they used to, and so we need to look and think about how we can best accommodate them. And as Councilmember Lopez mentioned, understanding that mobility is not, can happen at any time in your life, and that these things are all things that need to be thought about. I think that's maybe where I'll leave comments for now.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the feedback and take it to heart. I wonder if there's appetite to maybe look at the resolution that created the Social and Economic Justice Commission, maybe via a subcommittee, to see if there's some tuning that could be done there to bring something back to council. I mean, one disconnect that seems to have existed and at times created confusion is, while it's called the Social and Economic Justice Commission, is charged as social environmental issues affecting the welfare of the residents of Albany, and at times, that's created confusion between what was at the time the Sustainability Committee and the SEJC. Now the Sustainability Committee has become the Climate Action Committee, but I think that that disconnect still exists, which isn't to say that environmental justice isn't within that spectrum, but there might be a way to bring more definition into the, the charge of the committee in the resolution by making an amendment. So one idea would be to have a subcommittee to, or, sorry, ad hoc committee. The difference being a subcommittee is a, is a standing body that would be subject to the Brown Act, whereas an ad hoc committee is a sort of a single task committee that's not subject to the Brown Act. So an ad hoc committee that could look at, bring back a recommendation to the council on how it's charged might be framed a little better, modernized.
I'll just say that I want to thank everybody for commenting, especially the vice chair of the SEJC. Your continued involvement in these conversations has been very helpful, to have someone who's partly in charge of leading this body, helping us deliberate on it. We've obviously spent a lot of energy in this council and the previous council in trying to make this body effective and try and help it on its mission. It seems we haven't found the way yet. We'll try and keep helping in whatever way we can, and we'll keep listening to what that is. I'll say for my part, you know, when I was editing this document and sending it back to Councilmember Jordan, I was umming and gawing about the name, and well, what if we added this in, but then how do you encapsulate that and not this, and decided to see how well the discussion went on paring it down this far. Obviously, that wasn't the right approach. I think there's still discussions we had about exactly what, and maybe that happens during work plan, maybe that happens with an ad hoc. I did want to ask if we wanted to consider, there was another, this isn't just a name change suggested, this was a change in the, as Councilmember Jordan mentioned, the, the sort of defining mission of the body, which we may want to come back to later, because as he points out, it probably is in need of modernization, even if we want to keep the overall charge. There was also a suggestion in there that, which again, came from discussions with members of the SEJC to reduce it down to five instead of seven, which I know logically, it seems like more people equals better committee, but if you've served on a public body, you may know that sometimes that is not always the case, and it may be more effective with fewer. I wanted to see if there was any appetite to discuss that now, or if people wanted to come back to it later possibly, or leave it fully.
And I'm unfamiliar with this part of it, where, that you said there's seven currently?
Yes, there are, uh, one appointed by each member of this council, um, and then there's an at-large seat appointed by this council by a majority vote, as well as a seat appointed by the board, uh, by the school board.
I see.
Which we, due to our change in policy now ratify, so we have sort of authority over, but they make the recommendation of, and we stamp.
Gotcha. I, I, I could see paring it back down to five. I agree with you. Sometimes the more doesn't always give you kind of the end result that you're hoping for, so I would be on board with that.
I would slightly, and respectfully push back on that and just say that, uh, having more or at, keeping it where it's at does help a lot, because it does allow diverse perspectives, similar to what's happening right here on the council. Um, the, one of the problems though, with previous iteration of the SEJC was that there was a previous council member that intentionally withheld making an appointment, and by doing so, that did make it difficult to ho, have quorum in order, in order to have meetings. Um, however, when that was, uh, addressed, and we were able to have six folks on SEJC, um, and one of the, uh, public speakers who you just heard earlier, who's, uh, Flor, um, is, was one of those folks recently appointed, when we had, uh, a sizable number that not only helped us reach quorum to have meetings, but, uh, also had enough people to take care of the work plan. Uh, so it, it's not just an issue of making sure we have, uh, a lot of people for diverse perspectives and, and voices and experiences, but it's also to make sure we shore up the, uh, the workload and labor, um, because commissioners and committee members don't get paid. They, they do this out of the kindness of their very gen, generous heart, uh, which we, I think we all appreciate, but being able to have seven members, six to seven members allows us to also, um, have a good, robust work plan, knowing that if we do our part in appointing folks and not withholding appointment for whatever weird reason, um, we could have a very sustainable and productive, uh, committee or commission, whether it's the SEJC, uh, planning zoning, what have you.
Could you see dialing it back to six then, keeping the extra seat through the school board?
What, what was that?
Or could you see dialing it back to six from seven?
I believe that would have to have a more conversation, right, about potentially removing school boards appointed?
No, I would, I would mean keeping the school board.
Yeah.
And, and reducing the one at-large seat.
Yeah, that, uh, she's referring to the council as a whole.
Yeah.
So it'd be six members, removing the council as a whole appointee.
Yeah.
I, I'm agreeable to that, um, because it, it does in some sense help significantly with trying to reach quorum. Um, life does happen. Uh, it happened for me and for another commissioner, uh, in the last couple of months, and we couldn't make meeting. Um, and I think that, I'm agreeable to that suggestion, that maybe city, we don't need to have an appointed city council at large, uh, appointee.
Yeah. And then also, I, I, I like the, you know, bringing the focus back in, you know, tightening up a little bit to really be concrete on what, what their work plan consists of.
So in, in that regard, um, yeah, I don't know that I'm ready to, to support a change in the number of members of the body. I think that's something else that could come under the ad hoc committee idea, if that was of interest to the council. Um, I don't know that we could take an action on that tonight, or if we need to agendize the creation of an ad hoc committee, um, as a separate discussion at a separate meeting.
Is it to, to clarify, is it to actually discuss the scope of SEJC as well as the amount of members?
Yeah.
Those members maybe. I would be okay if the council wanted to take that direction based on the agenda description, just the creation of an ad hoc committee, and obviously the ad hoc committee would need to come back with recommendations to the council.
Great, thanks. So it's possible that this body can do it, and that doesn't mean the body will do it, but we can at least discuss it and entertain it.
I'm, I'm trying to understand, um, so an ad hoc committee would meet, the first opportunity for the ad hoc committee to report back to us would be January 17th, which would be our next meeting. Uh, so in theory, we could still stay on schedule to, by the end of January, have a commission seated, a new commission seated.
Yes, and I think, well, I think in terms of the, the charge, now, obviously, if the, if the charge gets changed, then maybe, um, individuals, the school leadership would nominate different people based on the change in charge, so there is a nexus there. But I think what's being contemplated, what the ad hoc committee would be asked to do, in my mind, is, is not as dramatic as what was put forward here. So I don't see as likely to be a disconnect between who's appointed and what ultimately, the, how the charge would be changed. Um, of course, the ad hoc committee, should it be impaneled, could come back with something else, but that's my, my current guess as to what would happen. Um, and in that regard, in terms of the, the number of members, I'll, I'll note, um, you know, it tends to be a, a whiff of power and pejorative to committee versus commission. Um, in my experience, just in a committee and a commission, is commissions, commissioners don't tend to do volunteer work outside of the commission itself, whereas committee members actually do volunteer work in developing policy. Um, so like charter review committee, basically did, did a lot of work. Um, climate action committee has a lot of subcommittees and does a lot of its own policy development work. You could speak to economic development, and I don't know if it adds up committees, I think it might have at one time. Um, so I actually see committees as, as a powerful recognition that, that its members are people who are active and doing work outside of just showing up at the meetings and making, making the decisions on matters that are essentially put before them by staff. So in proposing changing the name from commission to committee, in my mind, it was to recognize, and in a sense, honor, um, that the members are active in that way. Uh, I'm not set on it either way, but those are the terms as I, I understand them. And in that regard, I think more members is more helpful, because you have more work capacity. Um, so climate action is seven members, and, uh, economic development committee, what, seven members?
Can I ask, um, staff or the city attorney a question? So if a commission or committee is seven, does that mean a subgroup can be three, because it's not the majority?
So you're correct, if it was to be an ad hoc committee, which is not subject to the Brown Act, it needed to be no more than three. Um, but if it was a standing committee, which you heard earlier, is of, of longer duration and a continuing subject matter, even if it was three, it would be subject to the Brown Act. And quorum would be four for a commission of seven.
And if a decision was made to change it to six, you're in a weird place, because...
The city manager and I were talking about that. There's more potential for ties, quorum is still four in that case, so oftentimes, we prefer odd-numbered, uh, council, uh, committee positions or commission positions.
I'll make a motion just to move things along. So, um, I, uh, move the creation of an ad hoc committee, and if the motion passes, then we can figure it to, uh, the creation of an ad hoc committee to consider, um, updating the charge of the Social and Economic Justice Commission, potentially its name, and potentially its membership, uh, with the body to bring back recommendations on those three topics. And should this pass, then we can decide who would be on the body.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. City clerk, can you please take a vote?
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Is there any council member who would like to volunteer to be on this ad hoc committee?
I think I kind of put my foot in the mouth earlier, so...
Yeah, I was gonna make you.
I'll gladly do it.
Is there anyone else who would like to be on the committee? Uh, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
Uh, then I will move that we appoint, uh, councilmembers Lopez and Hanson Romero to the ad hoc committee that we have just created.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Yeah, and I just want to add, because there might be some perception that, um, as one of the authors of this report, that I'm trying to, uh, do away with the Social and Economic Justice, Justice Commission. Um, so I just want to note that I was responsible for the appointment of three members of the commission, um, including realizing that our charter allowed for the council to appoint when a council member would not. So I just offer that as evidence that I'm not trying to get rid of the body, I'm just trying to make it function, um, a little better and meet the needs of the moment. Um, so I really appreciate everybody's input, and I hope you see that it changes the trajectory of where we ended up.
Thank you. I believe that moves us to item 11-2, the appointment to a racial equity survey ad hoc committee. And I believe this is again, a presentation by Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you. Yes, hopefully it was, uh, hopefully I laid it out, um, in writing. My writing is not always the best. Um, this, I believe the recommendation came from the Social and Economic Justice Commission to, uh, have the city conduct a racial equity survey in September of 2021. Um, then the, there was a request for cameraless proposals or qualifications. Um, the firms that came back, none of them really seemed responsive or skilled in this area. Uh, they were more general survey firms who seemed to be trying to reach into this, uh, stretch into this new domain. Um, and so the council, uh, decided not to essentially go with any of those firms, um, and to put out a request for qualifications, uh, which had, you know, some new features, um, some better tuning to the need. Uh, six, six responses that were, uh, that came back, and I think I laid out the timeline of how we ended up here this much time later without having processed those and made a recommendation at the council. Uh, so certainly welcome any questions in that regard, but, uh, the recommendation at this point is to, um, either reconstitute, or at least, depending on whether you want to, um, want me to continue on that body or not, either reconstitute it with two other members and/or appoint another member to join me in, in doing that work, so we can finally bring a, a recommendation to council, um, as to which of those firms we want to ask to do this work.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open public comment before we go to council deliberation.
None.
Seeing nobody, we'll bring it back to council deliberation.
Are there any volunteers? I mean, I suppose I could just be an ad hoc committee of one and, and just, uh, bring a recommendation, but that doesn't feel particularly good. I would far prefer to be talking with somebody about it.
I could, uh, join you, so you are not caught talking to yourself in the city chambers.
I very much appreciate that. So, uh, if I may take the liberty with that, I will move, uh, to appoint Councilmember Lopez to the ad hoc committee to bring back a recommendation on, on firm or firms to approach regarding the racial equity.
Seconded.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. Bring this to 11-3, our last point of new business, um, which is the city council appointments to regional bodies. Um, I believe our city clerk will be making her, her report.
Yes. Good evening, council. This is an annual item for the council to discuss the appointment to county and regional bodies, where representation of the cities require. The council reviews and update the appointments to the county and regional bodies, um, on a periodic basis, and typically annually in December after the city council reorganization. A number of appointments require the mayor as appointee and vice mayor as alternate, as noted in the matrix that was attached to the staff report, and a number of these are recommended by the city council and formally appointed by the respective organization. And in addition, um, and some can include non-elected as appointees. Um, the ones that are asterisks with four, I think the, on the matrix that got cut out. Um, in addition, per the guidelines included in the city council procedures and policies, these appointments should be mostly considered for a two-year period. Staff is recommending council to review and update the appointments per the guidelines and to ensure city is represented at all county and regional bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open public comment.
Yep, none.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council deliberation. Uh, to make this, uh, easy to go through, I think we will go through these one by one in the order that they are presented on the agenda, um, and ask, uh, who, if anyone is interested, and if no one steps forward, I have ideally drafted all of you, so I will volunteer you if necessary. Um, so, uh, the first one that is currently unappointed is the League of California Cities, East Bay. Um, is there anyone who would like to serve as an appointee or an alternate? Vice Mayor Mickey, you'd like to serve as the appointee?
Uh, I would, but I would love to see if any other council members are interested.
I, I would be interested in serving as the alternate for that.
Um, I don't know if, I, I believe we also got an email, uh, from former, uh, council member McQuade, asking to, but I can't remember which...
That was for the Housing Authority, which I was going to mention when we got there.
Great, all right, thank you. I just, I wanted to double check that.
Um, seeing your recommendation or volunteers, um, do we need a motion on each of these?
No, let's just do, go through and, and make one motion.
Okay, great. Um, then I'm gonna put those two down. Um, the next we have is the Elm, uh, Elmira County Mosquito Abatement District. Um, are there any volunteers?
Um, I'm gonna try and volunteer somebody else, so I've been, I've been...
As the current representative.
Current representative, so I've served on this body for two years. Um, as a new council member, I found, not that this is my plan, I did it because I'm a geologist and I'm interested in such things, uh, and you can see who I'm looking at. Um, and, but I found it was a great, it was a great, um, body to serve on as a new council member, because as a, as a single mission agency, uh, its budgets were simpler, its pension funds were simpler, um, in a way that was more accessible to me, and it helped me then in turn understand the city finances by extension. Uh, so I found it to be a, a great learning environment in that regard. Um, beyond that, uh, and so I'm, I'm gonna see if, uh, Councilmember Lopez would be interested in, in taking on this duty, because it's, it has a nexus with hydrology. Um, and they also are realizing that they have some, some equity issues. Uh, so one of the things that they track is calls for service, and they realize that in parts of the county, they get no calls for service, which probably isn't right. There's probably a need for service in those areas. Um, and so I think that, that's an area where they could use that perspective, um, and are looking for that perspective. Uh, on the hydrologic front, um, one of the things I started working with them on, I would certainly welcome continuing to be an alternate and working with whoever joined this body. certainly welcome continuing to be an alternate and working with whoever joined this body, if somebody else should, should be willing to, to take the seat, is that a lot of their work is treating storm drain catch basins because they're designed, so they have standing water in them by design, and I think there is an opportunity for retrofitting and or altering catch basins so that they basically self-drain that small amount of remaining water into the subsurface. And this agency in particular, I think, is uniquely suited to pursue that. It's, it's really a phenomenal agency. I mean, it's, it's, this gets bandied around a lot, but they are a national leader. They, I was quite surprised, they published a number of peer-reviewed papers in journals, which is not common for agencies like this, and so it really is an opportunity to, to be part of an agency where the whole field, you could be part of advancing the whole field of mosquito control, which I know doesn't sound particularly sexy, but, and maybe to add to that, there is an invasive species, Aedes aegypti, which is a vector of numerous diseases, which is in, has arrived in all the counties around us and not yet in Alameda County, and this is a species that can reproduce in a thimble full of water in a week. And, and so it's gonna be quite an issue when it hits. We're basically gonna have to be going door to door asking people to eliminate any standing water in their backyard in order to get this, this vector under control. So that's my pitch. Hopefully somebody will take it up.
I feel like someone was attempting to pull my heartstrings with subsurface and hydrology there.
Don't you know it?
I can marinate it on it a bit. If anyone else wants to volunteer themselves, if not, then I will gladly put myself in the ring of fire there.
Yeah, like I say, I actually see now that this is one of those bodies that alternates are not allowed, but, but I certainly would desire to continue working with you on this, this effort that I started because it's kind of just starting up, and they're, one of their leads there was interested in meeting with me on, I think, January 10th to, to further on this subject, so that's something we could both meet with him on. Obviously, I'd bring you in and we can arrange the time.
Not seeing anyone else jump for it. I think that's yours. Next, we have the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Are there any councilmembers who are dying to serve?
Yes.
Expect you to have your hand up like a kid in the back of a classroom.
I got my hand up. Don't mess with my hand.
Anyone else or anyone who would like to serve as an alternate?
I'd be happy to serve as an alternate.
Great.
I do want to double check that. Councilmember Hanson Romero, if you have an interest?
Slightly, but I think, I think you'll do well with this.
Okay, I'm taking that as Vice Mayor will be our alternate. Next, we have the Alameda County Waste Management Authority and the Stop Waste and Energy Council. As I understand, they're one body.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's, it's kind of two bodies in one. It's the Waste Management Authority Board and the Energy Council Board, and you would serve on both, and they meet simultaneously, so it's not like you would go to two meetings. The Energy Council is a body that's funded by contracts and grants to pursue building energy improvements. So in the past, it's been energy efficiency, but some of the contracts they have, for instance, are the Bay Area multi-residential building energy upgrades, which is a contract that they have to do the work for Bayren, which is a regional energy network, which is a regional agency improving, building energy efficiency and reducing greenhouse pollution. So it has a number of different facets. They've founded an interesting body to serve on, but certainly welcome somebody else taking that on and having that opportunity.
When do they meet?
They meet at 3:00 on, I believe it's the second.
Fourth Wednesday, it says in our.
Okay, fourth Wednesday. They also have a Programs and Administration Committee, which is, as far as I could tell, was a committee of the whole, of the whole, meaning it's the same people as were on the board, and that meets on, I don't know, I can't remember, it was the third Thursday morning.
You just told me it was one meeting. Now you're telling me it's.
Yeah, yeah. So the two, the board, the boards don't have separate meetings, but the board combined has a combined board meeting, and then it also has this committee meeting, which often is educational and it meets at nine, and it's usually less than an hour, and staff will present any one of the variety of programs that they're, that they're pursuing.
I would, I would be interested in this.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Is there anyone interested in serving as an alternate?
I'd be happy to continue serving in that capacity.
Fantastic. That brings us to the Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly. I'll say that I would like to return to this. I was previously on it a couple of years ago, and now my work dovetails with it nicely to where I talk about what ABAG does every day, but if there's anyone else who's interested, please, we can discuss.
I've lost track. Where are we? Sorry.
Association of Bay Area Governments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing none, would anyone like to be an alternate?
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
I don't imagine I'll be, well, actually, I have attended as alternate for you sometimes, so I guess there's a possibility there.
It happens. On occasion. Sometimes people get sick, though I still went to EBC while I was sick. That brings us to the East Bay Sports Field Recreation JPA. Is there anyone who's especially interested in this body?
I would be interested maybe as an alternative.
Only as an alternate?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who is even more interested?
I was potentially, I used to be potentially more interested, but now that it looks like someone lured me with water in subsurface earlier. Sneaky guy over there.
I will offer that, I believe the meetings are in the Berkeley Mayor's Office during the, during the day, so in that sense, it might be less of a burden than other bodies might be in terms of getting to and from.
My only reservation is that I will be potentially teaching a course at UC Berkeley during the day on Wednesday. I too would probably just put myself as an alternate.
Vice Mayor, was that a reluctant hand?
That is, I think what got me was it's in the mayor's office in downtown Berkeley, and that's about 250 feet away from my office, so I think I can.
Perfect.
Get to those meetings pretty quickly.
Ideal.
Get their steps in.
Yeah. I'm hearing that we'll have our representative there be our Vice Mayor with our alternate as Councilmember Hanson Romero. Great. That brings us to the East Bay Community Energy JPA Board. This is one that I would like to stay on as it is incredibly technical and has taken a great deal of time to get up to speed, and there's a lot of work to keep going on, but if anyone would like to represent on it or be the alternate, please don't hesitate to speak up.
I would be interested in being detonate an alternate for that one.
Fantastic. And as, as Councilmember Jordan has said, you do occasionally get to do it, as I occasionally do miss one.
Yeah, I think I attended twice in the last year, so, yeah.
That brings us to the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda. This, as was mentioned earlier, we did receive a letter from former councilmember McQuade, who has been the appointee here. They pointed out in their letter that this is not necessarily a position that must be filled by someone on council. It can be a person recommended who is someone else from the community, and pointing to the great deal of good work they have done to deepen our connection as they do currently serve as chair of this body, which is, I will say, impressive given the low amount of action that the Housing Authority takes part in in Albany. I will also point out, one of the things that can partly convince me is that this meets at 8:00 AM on Wednesdays in Hayward, which, speaking as someone who used to have to work in that building, is not a fun commute at 8:00 in the morning. But is there anyone who would dearly like to serve here?
I would be interested in being the alternate to former councilmember McQuade and have her serve, continue to serve on this.
This one doesn't have alternatives because it's technically appointed by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Well, then, I, I would like to see former councilmember McQuade continue with this.
I'm hearing general agreement on that front. It sounds all right. Next is the Alameda County Library Advisory Commission.
I'm, will volunteer for that, since I think I only have one at this point, so in all fairness.
I believe you do. You've given up quite a few.
Yeah.
We thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone who would like to serve as an alternate on this one? I'll say that I'm happy to.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Roster College of Natural Resources Dean's Advisory Committee on the Giltr Act. Is there anyone who would like to serve on this commission?
Seeing how I am in that department, I would love to.
Be recommended. I figured that that might be the person we would appoint. Is there anyone who would like to serve as an alternate on that?
I doesn't, I don't think there is an alternate.
Is there not?
Yeah.
I think you can only recommend one person, council can only recommend one person for the dean to approve?
Then we're done with that one.
I think just some, some quick background, there was a request for funds from the Sugar Sweet and Beverage Tax that came from, from the group, and we got close to, but then it didn't happen, providing some funding because they actually had experienced where if they had sufficient funds to hire teachers, commit to hiring teachers during the summer, they actually were able to make more money than it cost, but they need to have that money upfront. So I think there's great opportunity there to, to partner and to advance that partnership and really supercharge or help that organization take the next step.
Great. I believe that brings us to our last one, which is the Alameda County Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee.
Yes, I looked at this. It's been vacant for I don't know how long, and I'm, I'm not happy with myself for that. I'll take responsibility for my part. I looked at the body and I don't remember the exact description, but it needs to be somebody who uses transit regularly and, you know, ideally somebody who's disabled or senior. And so in that regard, and it doesn't have to be a council member, in that regard, I was thinking perhaps on behalf of the council, I, staff, somebody could reach out to the Albany Disability Squad and to the Friends of Albany seniors and see if either of those entities have people who they know are members or otherwise interested, and they feel that they would nominate. I mean, I think I would probably use it in that language because we want them to have seriousness, seriousness of intent with who they put forward and really put some thought into who they think would be a good member. So that's my proposal for how to proceed on that.
I would agree with that.
That sounds by right to me, and it sounds like you volunteered yourself to do that outreach, if you're willing.
I am willing. I had the email almost ready to go, and I was like, you know, better if this comes from the council or with, with the imprimatur of the council, so thank you.
Well, now it will. City Clerk, have we covered all of them?
Yes.
Do we now need?
Well, I think, I think there is one more.
I thought there was, are there not the two by two by two, and am I missing something on here?
The two by two by two and the mayor's conference are both defined as, the mayor's conference, it's the mayor with the vice mayor's alternate, and the two by two, the two are the mayor and vice mayor.
Okay. And is that, what about the Hospital Task Force and the Police and Fire Pension Fund Board?
I believe that one is also automatically mayor and vice mayor.
There will be an item that will be, be brought to the city council in January to appoint the appointee and the alternate for the pension board.
Okay, yeah, because I looked at the charter, and I think the charter defines the mayor.
Right.
As the member.
Right.
But an appointee needs to be, I mean, an alternate needs to be appointed. And as far as the Altibait Task Force, I'm, I'm not really sure that actually exists anymore as a, as a entity.
I have checked with the prior formal councilmember McQuade and Nathan, who has been on that task force, and they said they haven't been meeting at all.
Thank you.
Thank you for tracking.
Yes, very much appreciated.
Just want to make sure I'm up to speed.
Do we need a motion ratifying these appointments?
If we could have a motion in a second, and then I'll do the roll call.
Then I will move that we ratify the appointments we've just discussed.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we have a vote?
Councilmember, Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 12, council subcommittee reports. Expect everyone to have a report ready of the body you've just been appointed to. I will go first, as I think Mayor Jordan and I may have the only one, or Councilmember Jordan and I may have the only ones. As I mentioned, I did attend an EBC meeting last week. I do not have my normally detailed notes because I was in the depths of a fever, which was mercifully short, but was going on during that meeting. We made a brief adjustment to the CEO's contract to correct an earlier mistake, as well as discussed NEM. We did not take a position on the new NEM. We just talked about it and generally agreed with our previous recommendation that NEM should be updated, being with an equitable lens and to make it effective. There was not really, as I recall, any firm recommendation besides that. We also got a variety of updates that I can't recount in detail.
You might want to expand the acronym NEM for people.
Net Energy Metering, which is the program that governs individual solar power on rooftops and is an incentive program for that.
Thanks. So yes, I attended meetings of the mosquito abatement district and stop waste. There's nothing particularly noteworthy to report from the last meeting of the mosquito abatement district. Stop waste, we authorized a contract for a waste characterization study with a consultant that does such work. This essentially entails taking a statistical sample of waste that is generated by households and businesses across the county, putting it on a table and sorting it into bins and characterizing the waste. And for the first time, this is also not just going to characterize the waste stream, but the recycling stream and the green waste stream as well. So there should be some excellent data that comes out of that that helps us understand at a county level how we're doing.
Great. Thank you for that report. I believe that brings us to item number 13, future agenda items. Are there any councilmembers who would like to request an item for the future agenda? Seeing none on council, we'll go to the public.
Okay, so, yeah, future agenda items, maybe bring some sort of meeting, meeting requirements, or I know in the SCJC, there's like meeting rules, meeting, I don't know what it's called, meeting conditions or something, and possibly you could bring that up in a future agenda item to possibly refrain from using profanity, specifically the, the B-word. I know that, you know, I got a lot of feedback from describing a situation as ghetto, but here in the council tonight, I heard a councilmember over there, pretty sure I heard him say the, the B-word, saying that something was, you know, I'm trying to find it on the, the thing, but it was just. it was just meeting norms, just, just language. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment, City Clerk? Okay, I will note one, which is partly a reminder to all councilmembers that I would love to see on a future agenda that we have all pointed people to commissions and committees when we can, especially the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would love to see on our next agenda that we have all done so, as I've been reminded by our planning and zoning, planning manager, that we are under a time crunch for that body looking at our draft housing element and its next form. And it would be very beneficial for them, for that body to meet with all of its new members in January before they consider that in February. So I will urge you all to move with all possible speed in appointing there. That brings us to announcements of city meetings and events. I ask everyone to govern themselves and look towards the calendar of meetings. And I believe that brings us to our adjournment.
If I could ask a quick question?
Please.
City Clerk, has the MADDY Act notice gone out for asking for applicants for all advisory bodies?
No.
Okay, I didn't think it had, and I think I appreciate that, actually, based on the discussion at the last meeting. So it might be helpful to know your anticipated schedule so that people know when they can actually start considering appointing.
Yes, I will publish the vacancy notice and send out an e-news and e-notification and all avenues that we are able to solicit for candidates.
Okay.
Then we'll share with the councilmembers on the applications.
Okay, thanks. And you think that'll be published this week, or?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. With that, I thank city manager, city attorney, city staff, city clerk, vice mayor, councilmembers. I promise you, not all meetings will be this brief, so be prepared. And wish everybody a happy holidays, and we are adjourned.